Now for the Fire Police and Civil Defense Committee with Mr. Mahan to discuss the Fire Department Quarterly Update. Mr. Mahan.
Thank you, sir. Chief, if you'd come up. And also, we're after the Quarterly Update. Chief, we have some legislation tonight for staff and increased staffing that's connected to a grant. So if at the end of your report, you'd remind us, we think that grant has come in and we're ready to access those funds. Just explain that to us. And then Counsel, we're gonna ask, after you have a chance to ask the chief questions, I'm gonna ask for that to go through just one reading tonight. I mean, excuse me, go to its third reading this evening for the fire. Excuse me. Thank you, Chief.
Absolutely. Good evening. Everybody survived the windstorm, everything with less damage as possible? I hope. So, yeah, to start off, I've got, I'll go through the list here, and you have to vary in there. We'll open up some questions. But everybody should have received the 2022 end of the year reports. I'm not going to go through and hash that all out. But if we've got some questions at the end, I'd be more than happy to answer those. But so to kind of start off for this year, for this quarter, you know, we always start each year with kind of a catchphrase. And this year's catchphrase was, let's create good habits type down there. So as we come in early, as we're checking trucks and stuff like that, something that just always, when we're doing meetings and to remind everybody is that's kind of the catchphrase we've used this year. You know, a lot of it is training, get back to the basics. But this year, it's, let's create good habits. Just kind of start off the year. So if I start off with some run stats and go down, 2023 here to January, January 1st to current, we're at 1,353 emergency incidents. Eighty-six percent of that is EMS, 14% of that is fire. To give you a little comparison, matter of fact, I wrote down that wrong thing. I wrote down that same number. I was going to give you the same comparison there for June, but I do know is we're a little bit less than last year. We're 105 runs less than last year. But the crazy thing with it is exactly the same. Eighty-six percent was was fire, 14% was EMS. So those margins have stayed the same. So we're a little bit down from last year, but that's never a bad thing when we're talking about emergency incidents. We never want to trend upwards, but I'm telling you, it won't take-
You have more fire than EMS? That's odd.
No, we have more EMS. Eighty-six percent.
You said the other way.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. Eighty percent, eighty-six percent is EMS. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. 14% is fire. Yeah, very seldom does it go the other the other way. But yeah, absolutely. And then just to kind of feel you on Saturday, on that windstorm and rain event there, we responded to over 40 emergency calls within that 24-hour period of time. So as you can tell, it won't take long to catch back up on runs and actually probably surpass last year's number. But so personnel, the 20th there on Monday, Eric Fisher was promoted to lieutenant. He is taking the ranks of our EMSC. That's our EMS coordinator, training lieutenant. It's a 40-hour position. He was in training all last week, so today was his actually first day in the office. And then we'll set his swearing in here as soon as we hire in our new guys. We're at, we are at full staff. We do have some people on injury leave. We do have two that are out on injury leave still right now. One is our respect, is to be back here within a couple of weeks. And one of them's got a couple more months to recover from a broken ankle. Brian Conant, he's set to retire here on May 1st, May 1st. Brian will have about 32 years in with the city when he retires. And then Jimmy Maury is set to retire here on July 8th with the 25 years of service. So with interviews, so this is all kind of with the SAFER Grant and retirees kind of got us with the, you know, having to do some interviews and working with Tony, and we completed the process for hiring there. So the first part of March, we completed our interviews. We have offered five new employees, the positions, and I'm happy to say that they have accepted those. However, I can't really give you those names yet because we haven't set those dates, their starting dates yet because we're waiting on the contract to be finalized, which will hopefully be here within a couple of days. The 29th, right, is the 29th is when they're going to issue the issue the hearing or issue the, whatever proper word that is, type deal. So we'll be giving them their their start dates here real soon, then they can reach out to their respective employers. So that's why I kind of got to hold back, hold back those names. But the five very, very, very well qualified, they're going to make a great fit to our fire department. Our part-time program, we got 15 in our part-time program currently. We made some adjustments with requiring hours and some training and stuff like that. And I'd say right now that the staff that we have in our part-time program is probably the strongest that we've had since we started the program. So super, super happy with them and the group that we have that we have right now. Matter of fact, two of them tested for a full-time position and will be transferred over to our full-time position there. So just to, just to show you that that part-time program does play a big role in filling our full-time vacancies when that, when that is needed. As far as grants, our vehicle exhaust system that we, that was one of the two-part one we received on the FEMA grant, that's to be installed here around April the 10th or so down here at the main station. So both bays will have the Magna Grip, Magna Grip Vehicle Exhaust Removal System. That's a big deal when it comes into battling cancer in the fire service with the diesel exhaust fumes. So that's going, we're going to get that one started. The bid packet for our hose and appliance grant, that bid opening is April the 20th. So we'll all be getting new hose and nozzles and some other type of valves on trucks and stuff like that. Will all be new, part of the FEMA grant. So it leads us in a little bit where you guys are, the ordinance for tonight is the SAFER Grant that we got awarded that we're hiring three, three personnel. We are now within that window. You had to wait six months kind of recruitment period before you can hire anybody, and we're within that window. So once again, we're just waiting on the, on the contract to be finalized, and we already got those three. They're ready to go. So tonight's ordinance is very important to pass so we can, we can get them hired and then on station sooner than later. Couple grants that we have sent out that we're going to hope that we hear some good stuff from. We have sent an EMS grant. We've submitted it to help fund two of our guys through medic school tuition this year. So hope, fingers crossed, that we get good luck, that, you know, that range probably hopefully about somewhere a little bit, little bit shy of $20,000 if we're lucky enough to receive that grant. And then we've also submitted for a grant for a couple thermal imaging cameras, one for downtown and one for the Gambier Station. We submitted that one through the Shriners, Shriners, and we've received one from them before. So we're very, very thankful for what they do for us. And then we also, we did receive a $4,000 grant from the Energy Cooperative Roundup Foundation. And that is for physical fitness equipment at Station 2, at the Gambier Station. So whatever we can get for $4,000 physical fitness-wise, you never know with their type deal.
I was wondering, what is a thermal imaging camera?
What is a thermal imaging camera? Is that what you said?
Camera.
Camera.
I thought you said hammer. I'm sorry.
No, that'd be pretty neat, though.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, thermal imaging camera.
Okay.
Yep, a couple of those. Those came a long ways. They're, they're pretty slick and easy to use nowadays. So then we got the physical, that, that. So training, training wise, right now, we have two in rescue tech school. Rescue tech school is, it's about an eight, eight, seven, eight-month program. They reach their tech level discipline in about five, five areas. Mr. Zick was a rescue tech in his, his days of being a firefighter. We got, we got two in that right now. Lieutenant Harrod and Lieutenant Fisher are currently in that class right now. Two of us, Lindsay and myself, are in Leadership Knox and enjoying that. Very good class. Captain Lester has started his High of Fire Executive Program through the High of Fire Chiefs. That, this is, that's a three-year commitment, and he starts that here, here real, real soon. Thomas Cooper, one of our newest employees, he just commit, or he just completed paramedic school and graduated that. He's on his training program right now. So happy to have another medic onboard. And then obviously with some training is we've been providing CPR to the city employees. They've been doing a great job with that. As far as college township, still working on completion of those bedrooms. It'll happen at some point in time. But I mean, other than that with college, I mean, no, no real complaints. I mean, it's proven that they, that that's been an important asset to the city. They're our third in on a medic into the city and no complaints there. It's, it's, it's really been going well. We've been doing a lot with Kenyon with inspections and everything like that. I know they're very happy to have us onboard there. There's five Kenyon volunteers still in the program. And what's kind of cool about that is actually one of them is part of our part-time program. So he's went through Sam Jenke, he's went through firefighter two and EMT. And even while he's still in school, he joined our part-time program. And then one of the other students that's in the program, she's working towards that to, to join our part-time program. So, so they're great, they're great to have along. Smart, smart, smart kiddos, and they're, they're a good asset for us. So other than that, went through it pretty fast, but that's where we're kind of at. That's kind of where we're at in the first quarter. Any, any questions for me?
Chief, for the last couple of years, finding staff was kind of a struggle. It sounds like it might have, that might have eased up a little bit, easier time finding staff?
Yeah, I mean, it comes and goes in those waves, like I've always said, it kind of goes in waves. This last Fire 2 or Fire 1, Fire 2 class at Knox Technical Center, we were very good recipients of that class. It was, I mean, I'm hiring a couple of full-timers out of that class. We probably got three or four of them out for the part-time class. And they've got another class that's going to be graduating here at the end of the summer. So I hope we still get that good energy from there and they, and they come join, join our team. But yeah, and then with, there was like 30 people, I think it was 30, that ended up taking our, our exam. By the end, it was only 12 on that list, but I interviewed them all and they were, they were, you know, if you take 100, if you have 100 people take it, it doesn't much matter if you got 10 or so that are, that are great candidates. And so I was happy with all of them. So yeah, good, we're doing real good right now.
Counsel, I'm up against my time. Question?
Um, well, maybe it'll be around, when you, I had questions about the three firefighters that we bring on through the grant. Are you going to be here during legislation?
I can be.
I don't know how late that is, so that's almost the end. Well, real quick, we got them through the grant. The grant pays for how many years?
Three.
And then the plans are after that?
Well, you can, yeah, they've kind of changed the way, type deal. The plans after that is hopefully we can retain them, or maybe we can utilize college township funding to retain them. I would assume our run volume is not going to go down and our needs for services are going to go up.
First three years are paid by the grant?
Hundred percent of their wages.
Thank you.
Yes.
So you don't have to stick around now?
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Hundred percent of their wages. Does it include fringes or anything?
Yeah, it does. It's, yeah, wa- wages, your healthcare and stuff like that, and actually uniform stuff. But overtime cost, anything like that, no, but base wages. Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
We're adjourned the Fire Police and Civil Defense Committee. We're going to move to another Fire Police and Civil Defense Committee. Mr. Mahan, discuss the police department staffing.
Thank you. Counsel, as the chief's passing us out his staffing levels here. Chief worked with Mr. Scott, and in the budget this year is three more officers. We're gonna, there's legislation tonight. We're gonna, we're gonna go through all three readings, gonna do first tonight. And Mr. Hill, we could have, chief's gonna introduce this tonight, but if we could have a meeting, a committee meeting to ask questions about this for the next meeting, just so everyone is clear and everyone has questions. We'll go through all three readings, and we'll have a committee meeting two weeks from now, so you all can ask questions. But, okay, chief, thanks. And let us, just tell us what we're going to do with this.
Good evening. Thank you. We are asking for three new officers for the Mount Vernon Police Department. Three years ago, we made the, we made the request for three officers, and it didn't come out to be. We had quite a bit of slowdown during the COVID times of the numbers we had. But those numbers are back up again to, to full speed. In discussing with several of the council members, citizens, and our administration, the increases the city is going to see in the next few years, I believe, warrant the fact that we need to bolster our base numbers to the Mount Vernon Police Department. Talking with the mayor, between 1,000 and 1,300 new housing units in the city of Mount Vernon in the next couple of years. The people that go along with that, the traffic issues that have been brought up many times. Our calls for service, our calls for service have gone up about 20-something percent over the last two years. We had a real high call volume. It dipped down during COVID. Excuse me, I've got a little bit of a cold thing going on here, I guess. But those numbers are back up to pre-COVID levels. We handled about 16,000, 17,000 calls for service last year, and we're going to be on track to exceed that this year again. The calls are more and more demanding. Take more and more officers' time to do it. Our overtime is, is actually manageable right now because of the 12-hour shifts. The 12-hour shifts have been a very good benefit to the city, working within the overtime constraints. The downside to that is when an officer works a 12-hour shift, there's not a lot of room for overtime in that person's life. When, excuse me, when we try to, when we do have overtime, and we do have some overtime. The, the officer's wellbeing, the exhaustion of our workforce, that's what we're trying to avoid. We haven't got to the point yet, but we could be at some point. Officers want time off with their families. Okay? We are, this is the basic layout of the Mount Vernon Police Department as it stands right now, minus the three yellow spots. I gave you all three graphics. The, my brain just locked up. Apology. So our, our officers are as busy as they ever are, and it's not going to get any better. We have continued to have an uptick in our drugs problem in the city of Mount Vernon. So far this year, we've collected 70% of the amount of meth that we collected all of last year. Call volume's up again, drugs up again, traffic issues. If you'll notice on this, so we had had great success with our first traffic officer. We had Troma Trowbridge as a traffic officer for about eight months right now, and he's had tremendous success. Our school zones, our trucks off state route issues, the complaints we have about neighborhoods with traffic. All of those are being able to be assigned to him. He has not only increased enforcement by issuing citation, he's also increased education by issuing warning tickets to certain people, about a two-to-one ratio. So to allow us to have a traffic officer on night shift, we would need another, another body there, too, to have a dedicated traffic officer on the night shift. Troma Trowbridge works the day shift hours. We would love to have one that works the night shift. Time after factories get off work, OVIs in the evenings, weekends, and so forth for the traffic issues. Okay? You've also heard in the past that we've had at points in time when we have officers that are injured or on FMLA, sick time, vacation, extended leaves of absence, military, that affects our manning. If we had the extra three officers, that would greatly affect our ability to keep the minimum at four, or we wouldn't have to go down to three as a minimum anymore. Currently, we are back up at four, and we plan to stay there. We do have one person still off on injury leave, and we have two spots that we're, we're in the process of filling right now. We've extended a job offer to one individual, but we haven't completed that yet. We have another person in the pipeline for that as well. So we've been taking these on a lateral candidate basis. Mr. DeUlyes is primed to go with a test here in the next 30 to 60 days for another entry level. Instead of, we've gone the lateral route. We've got some good candidates. Now we're looking at going through the testing process.
And chief, you said you're not running a lot of overtime, but what overtime you are running, another position would help.
These other positions will, we will never get rid of overtime in the Mount Vernon Police Department. We will always have some monicum of overtime. We greatly reduce the amount of overtime we had with the 12-hour shifts. And I think we can reduce that a little bit more further with the three new officers, the bottom line. Having a, having a larger selection of officers to pull from when it comes for overtime or comes for special duty is a benefit to us. And the big benefit of being able to pull from a larger group of people when, when we have somebody that's off on injury leave or FMLA, or they're having a baby or something like that, and that they're gone for extended periods of time.
I have a couple of questions on your chart.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that we currently have-
Can you go to the, can you go to the third one there, Rick?
You mentioned we have, currently have a traffic officer, but this is, you're asking for a new, where's the current traffic officer listed?
If you look, if you look up at the screen, I got there in the next page, second page on your hand out there. That is currently how our patrol division works. Our patrol division has got a lieutenant in command of it, and then a day shift and a night shift with a day shift commander and a night shift commander. Each shift is broken down into two squads. A and B squad are day shift, C and D squad are night shift. If you look at the, the center individual, that's kind of a floater. That individual is on a 10-hour schedule. Everybody else is on a 12-hour schedule. If you see off to the side of the left, there is our traffic officer. He's assigned to the day shift, and he is on a 10-hour schedule.
I see.
Rick, can you go to the third one? If we were to get the three new officers, this is the proposal of how the shifts would look then. The shifts would be balanced out with five individuals on each shift, or excuse me, each squad. And then a traffic officer on day shift and a traffic officer on the night shift. It would just balance the schedule out. It would eliminate that 10-hour position, because we all know 10 hours doesn't divide into 24 very well. The traffic officers would become the 10-hour position, and everybody else would be 12-hour.
Now, the first page, Towbridge 10. What's a Towbridge 10?
Towbridge, that's the officer's name that's assigned to the traffic detail.
No one else has a name there. I didn't know what a Towbridge is. Okay.
Yes, sir.
So Counsel, again, Chief will be back two weeks from now for, to answer questions specifically about this legislation. We'll go through all three readings, so we're not, you know, in a hurry to get this done tonight. We're going to have plenty of opportunity to think about it and ask questions, so.
Yes, we could have like a 30-minute meeting next time to answer questions. And if anybody has any questions, I would love, if you could email them to me or call me with them, and I will give you a written response to them if you'd like, for any questions anybody might have. My apologies for my voice tonight.
It's okay. Is that it? Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're going to adjourn that. We're going to move, move now to Parks and Lands and Mrs. Keener to discuss the CA and C Depot parking lot. Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I called this meeting so that Brian can kind of walk us through some of what we are working on with this. We are looking at doing a nature works grant, which will kind of help with some of the funding for this. That is a reimbursement-style grant. So I will just let Brian talk first about what we're doing here, some of the pieces of legislation that might need to come forward, and then I'll go through questions if we have any.
Great. Welcome, Counsel. Yes, so the area focus is the north side of the CA and C Depot, which is 501 South Main Street. Many of you may recall, we've done a lot of work to the south side, where we did get EPA funds to do the parking lot and the little rain garden areas. So I've got a, got a little diagram. We've, if you've been out there, the road into the depot to the north parking lot does not line up very well with the, you have to drive on the bike trail and then turn. You have to remember to turn. We did put some delineators out there. Our folks, our buildings and Parks Department put those out at Ms. Keener's request to keep people from just driving on. They park right in front of the building, walk in, and then they're in the way of the bike trail. So we're going to straighten that out. Parking lot's terrible. Be a complete replacement. We are, we've also accepted a statue, so we've identified a spot where the digital sign is now. We put the statue where that sign is, little walking area. We use some of those sidewalk brick pavers. We'd like to put a set of steps down from the statue down to our in-river bike trail. So especially, I think, for the 4th of July, it makes a nice route where you can get people under Main Street. You know, we can't install- Unless it rains a lot. Well, yeah. It doesn't typically rain that much other places, but if you were there on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the gate was closed, and you weren't supposed to go down there. So we're going to set this up for hookups for food trucks and/or improved camping. By taking away the sign, we are taking away a revenue source from Foundation Park. So I think Amber's going to explore the opportunity of creating a process where we or Foundation Park could rent these campsites for money. We'll have some benches, some viewing areas. We've left a spot here for our first responder memorial. I knew the mayor had gotten a group together. That isn't very well organized, but we'll have a green space for that for the future. We have leased this building to the Chamber of Commerce. They're not open 24 hours a day. So we're going to look at putting an outside bathroom that could be opened for events and then open later in the day. It would have a computer system, and then the door could lock, and the last person out, and the next person just can't get in. So it's locked at night, but it could be open maybe more hours in on weekends than the site is. When this has been left open, there's been an enormous amount of damage to the bathrooms, and then PD or somebody has to go lock it up every night. So that just became a challenge. We had homeless people living in Depot. So this gives us an outside area, and this would be, you know, concrete situation. So, am I missing any specifics?
I- I'm curious about the camping. I saw, I've seen trailers there. When do we start that? And how, how much do they pay, and how's that work?
Well, so a downtown merchant had told people they could camp there, but they actually weren't allowed to.
So we have been working on what would be a permitting process that would already work with the system that the city has set up. A goal of mine would be that as part of those fees coming in would actually help to bump up the pay wage of the meter made potentially, to make that a more viable position to hire out. And it would not only do the metering downtown, but it would also just check on those permits of those campers. But that is still something that's being worked on, because that's not, they're not allowed to camp there right now. There's actually legislation that would have to go through in order to allow camping.
There is no, there is no camping in any city parks at all.
That's what I thought. That's why I was surprised to see those trailers there.
We would, on the west side, where it's gravel, we would have an area here. And then we could have an area in the parking lot on the east, northeast side.
Another thing that those are useful for, though, are food trucks, which have already been used, used out there, like for the Trailapalooza event or for even 4th of July. They don't have connections right now. They're running really long extension cords sometimes. So that is something else that those connections would be useful for.
So we have potential camping spots partially completed at Foundation Park, which is not that far off.
Yep.
Yes.
I'm just trying to picture coming into Mount Vernon, Thomas Road is the vision we want people to see.
These are not long-term camping spots. That would not be the goal here. It would be overnight and gone.
Sure, one, two days on weekends. I'm just still trying to, because I think that's one of the reasons we, amongst other reasons we got out. We used to have camp in Memorial Park for years, and that was the hassles, the mess, and everything that came with that. That's why we got out of that. Just try to visualize it.
Part of it, I think, is getting the fee high enough that it, you know, it's not a management nightmare, and maybe subsidizes the traffic.
You don't see homeless putting a tent there.
So tent camping would be a separate element altogether, outside of an actual, like, RV?
Yeah, this would be more RV.
It's RV camping.
Yeah, it'd be more RV camping, and it would have a, we would pick a reasonably high price point, hopefully, to.
Did I hear you say we've already gotten a grant, or we've applied for a grant?
So this is, we will be- So, this is, we will be applying for a grant.
In hopes of paying for everything you just said?
There is nineteen thousand dollars available for Dox County for nature works. That would require a new, an extra piece of legislation to, and then we have to, it says seventy-five, twenty-five. But, yeah, so there's not, this year there's not really a lot. Normally, we get about ninety thousand from that program.
This is not a one-year project. Um, so, none of this is something that we're looking at doing this year. The grant application doesn't even go in until June first. These are just the plans.
Yep, we did budget two hundred thousand dollars for a project and uh, for this year's budget, so this could be phased.
And the bronze statue's funded as well. Everything, the package that came with that had a hundred thousand to take care of the installation and whatever with that, correct?
I don't remember, I wasn't here for that meeting.
Well, the, the paving piece has part of the installation in it, included in it as well. Because the paving piece we already put in the budget.
I don't, I wasn't in that meeting and then you also had a meeting. So, right now with this, the estimate is four hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. So, we would be asking somebody for the two hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars.
That is the difference.
Yes, between what we have in the budget.
Between what we've already budgeted, which is why we're going after a grant for at least part of it.
So, the nature works could cover not quite twenty-one thousand. So, then you still have a two hundred thousand to get from somebody.
Talked about the statue going where the electronic sign is, where's the electronic sign gonna be?
It's getting to the end of life, it's not, at this point it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to relocate it. So, there's been a lot of discussion, I'll turn that back to Amber, I think you've led a lot of that conversation.
So, there was a lot of discussion with the Ariel Foundation Park Conservancy Board and they decided to remove it. They approved the removal of it to place the statue there instead.
Yep, it does eliminate a revenue source, so we wanna be sensitive to that.
So, you just said we'll have to get two hundred thousand dollars from somebody someplace.
Not this year, though.
Not this year.
The sign removal, they moved a revenue source, what did that revenue source pay for?
It goes to the Foundation Park, so it pays for their operations. I don't know how much money they made.
I don't know how much comes in on that sign either.
Interesting.
So, I, I heard us say four hundred and twenty-two thousand-ish. But then you're saying we only need two hundred thousand?
You have appropriated two hundred thousand. It is in the, uh, remember your itemized budget sheets, it's a named project in the, in the budget.
Okay.
Yep.
So, then we have twenty and then we need another two hundred.
Well, we could get twenty.
We could get just about twenty from nature works.
Okay.
So, the resolution that we have coming forward today is to go out to bid for the amount of the two hundred some thousand that we've already appropriated, correct?
We'll bid whatever you want. And so, if you wanna do-
Because that was to be the paving.
Right, if you wanna do, if you wanna say, if there's a hundred that comes with the statue, we could scale those to a three hundred thousand dollar project. It's, there, it is a sort of an à la carte. You know, putting in a bathroom is a very expensive feature, that's, so part of this is like a phase one, phase two, maybe phase three. So, that depends on what you think we can get uh, grant wise.
I, I could, I think it's important, I mean, as we have other items, it does say bid and enter into contract, so for entering into contract, I mean, the, entering the contract for two hundred thousand, we got it covered. Entering the contract for four hundred thousand, doesn't sound like a good thing, 'cause now we gotta find two hundred thousand dollars. They don't have to get authority to do that.
Right.
So, to make this conversation clear then, statue stands alone on its own at a hundred thousand. What she wants done with that, so we're actually, and it's, so we're going out to bid for what we can do for two hundred thousand, correct?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
You said that's what we have in the budget, correct, Terry? While they're looking, I, I did have a conversation with Jen Oldwater when this all came about. And I think she was, with the hundred thousand was the possible, what the statue's gonna sit on. I think some benches, some railing, that type of thing, not just putting the statue out there on the ground. So, there was a package that went with that.
Yeah.
Figured out? So, we're looking to go out to contract for two hundred thousand that we have.
Right.
Makes sense.
It looks like research segment.
So, yeah, that would be concrete parking lot, statue. That would not include the stairs, you know, there's several things we would.
And the stairs were something that we had to look at separately anyway.
Could be, the two hundred thousand does not include the statue.
No.
It has its own money.
Yep.
You said the parking lot's gonna be concrete?
We have that under, did we receive that? Okay, so we need to receive that information, yes, we're gonna do a concrete parking lot. We need these parking lots to last about sixty to eighty years based on our replacement cycle, so that's concrete, not asphalt.
So, we doing the porous concrete like everybody wants and all that, really?
The porous, the infiltration area for the parking lot has already been installed. It was installed with the bike trail because the water was coming over the bike trail and creating ice. So, we have an infiltration system for the parking lot that was done with the ODOT project.
I am way over my time, does anybody have any other questions?
You owe us five minutes, Amber.
I'll bring pizza next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're gonna adjourn the Parks and Land Committee, we're now in recess until seven thirty PM when we begin the legislative portion of the meeting.
And I'll have seven thirty P M. Better call the legislative portion of the Mount Vernon City Council, March twenty seventh meeting to order. Mr. Hill, please call the roll.
Just one second here. Mrs. Seville.
Here.
Mr. Severns.
Here.
Mr. Mayhem.
Here.
Mrs. Woods.
Here.
Mr. Francis.
Here.
Ms. Keener.
Here.
Mr. Hillier.
Here.
We are in session, and the invocation this evening was given by Pastor Lucian Baker from Christ the King Church, and also a chaplain with the, but with our place department. We appreciate you doing that, too. Please rise at invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
I would like to start by just a short, very short scripture. The Bible says, "By me wisdom kings reign, and rulers make laws that are just, and by me princes govern, and all nobles who rule on earth. I love those who love me, and those who seek me find me." Our God does care about the decisions we make, and so I'm going to ask God to place His hand upon all of you for the things that you do, and the protection of our city, and for those that are suffering in other cities like Knoxville. So if you would join me in prayer. Father, Lord God, first of all, we thank you for your divine guidance. We thank you, Father, for your compassion, your kindness. Lord God, I would ask you, Father, to place your hands upon those that are suffering this evening. Lord God, that you would speak where I cannot and minister, where I don't know how to minister or any other minister does. But, Lord, you can speak, and those that are discouraged, God calls your angels to stand beside them and speak words of encouragement to them, and lift them up, and let them know that they're not alone. And, Lord God, for all of those that make decisions for our city, Lord God, those that stand in the decisions that are made, and for the well-being of all of us, God, I pray that your wisdom be granted to them. And, Lord God, more than all of this, that we never forget that you are our guard, you are our shield, and you are our buckler. Oh, God, touch this assembly by your hand. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
God bless you all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, in your packet for the minutes from the March thirteenth meeting, are there any additions or corrections? Now I'd ask for motion for approval.
Still move. Second.
They're moving second. They'd be approved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. They are approved. Mr. Hill, any petitions or communications?
There are none.
Counsel, in your packet were the committee reports from five different committees for your review. I see new listed control licenses or proclamations. We have one person asking to speak on matters of city concern, Brandy Booth from the Ohio Means Jobs. Yeah, please come to podium, say your, your name and address and.
Actually, I'm Connie Oliver. I'm in her place tonight.
Okay, Connie.
You need my address?
That's fine. Go ahead. Since you're with a group that we know, Ohio Means Jobs, we know where you're from. Okay. We can find you.
All right. Yes, you can, and that's why I'm here, hoping you guys can find us. We're trying to get the word out and let everybody know about the services, resources, and programs that we offer to not only our Knox County businesses, but job seekers. We have programs that go from our youth to adults. We'll start off with some of the youth programs we have, and youth are considered sixteen to twenty-four. We can help kids get their diplomas, say they're missing some credits and they need those credits to graduate. We have a credit recovery program. We have a GED program. We can help people get their GEDs so they can find a job. We also have a youth paid work experience that's really a good way for kids to find that career path and what they want to do. It's a program that lasts about twelve to twenty weeks, and they can go into different businesses and try it out and see if they like it. Say they think they want to get into nursing or health care. It's a way to not burn a bridge, get some experience, get paid while they're doing it, and see if that's really what they want to do. And we're hoping, based on, you know, what they want to do and what they talk about, that maybe they'll end up getting a permanent job out of it. So that's one of the programs we have. We also are starting a new summer program this year for kids that are like fourteen to fifteen-year-olds, and it's a six-week program this summer, and it's like a, they'll go spend a week at each business. They'll go to four different businesses, spend a week there, and see how they like it, just to get an idea of maybe what they want to pursue. Then we also have community outreach programs, too, which some of you may know, Teresa Vernon from our office. She helps people in recovery and on probation and works with a lot of the community resources. She goes out and does job search classes, helps people with their resumes, helps people look for jobs. We find employers that are willing to give people a second chance, and we hook those people up so they can find jobs. We also have our resource room that is open Monday through Friday. Anybody can come into our resource room. We can help you get a resume if you need it. Say you've got a big interview and you're a little nervous about that. We can do mock interviews with people. We have computers. We have resume service. We can make you a resume. All of our services are free. We're there to help anybody that wants to come in. And one of the things that I do is I'm a business service specialist, and I go out and I work with our local employers and post their jobs for them, advertise for them with billboards. We do radio ads, Facebook, and we also post them on Ohio Means Jobs. And one of these little job postings we send out every Friday to a lot of our community partners, anybody that wants to sign up for it, and it just has a listing of all our jobs. All you have to do is just click the link. You're able to go right to an application and apply for that job. I did bring some flyers, if you're interested, and any of that to keep that talks a little bit more about our services and programs that we have. Is there any, you guys have any questions for me? I know I'm trying to skim over this kind of fast and give you an idea of what we have. I mean, there's a lot more programs than even what I'm talking about. We can help businesses with on-the-job training. We can pay someone's wages to go in, you know. Say it's somebody that may have a past that the employer's not, you know, kind of on the fence about giving them a chance. We will pay half of their wages for twelve weeks and hope that in the end of that, that that employer's going to hire that person on full-time. Yeah, there's just so many different programs that I could go into. You know, we can help businesses upscale their current employees that they have, like say they bought some new equipment and they need to bring in a trainer to teach their people how to do that. We can pay for that trainer to come in and train those people on the equipment. We're just trying to get the word out to everybody and let them know, if you need a job or if you need employees, you know, come and see us. We can help you with that.
I would like one of your brochures.
Okay, great. I have several of them with all the different programs, and I have some cards, too. If you'd like me to leave them, I don't know where I should leave them at.
You can leave them on the podium right there. That would be fine.
Okay, great.
Connie, what is the job market in Knox County as far as the availability of employees versus the openings and jobs? We hear about the unemployment rate is so low now. What's the market?
It is low. The unemployment rate is low. We have probably, I think it's six hundred and thirty-nine jobs listed in Knox County, and we, I think we have, is it four point two percent unemployment rate right now? So there's definitely a lot of more jobs than there are people looking for them. But we're hoping to change that. We're hoping to, you know, with all the new companies and stuff coming in, we're hoping to attract more people, you know, to get those jobs. And a lot of the employers are raising their rates, too, you know. So people that are usually traveling to Columbus and stuff, they can find those jobs here, those good-paying jobs here that have the benefits. So we're trying to get that out to people and let them know, too. Like International Paper just raised their starting rate. It's twenty-four sixty-five an hour, and you don't have to commute to Columbus to get that. So a lot of employers are doing things like that, offering really good benefits, you know, to entice people to stay in the community. So we're trying to work on that, too. And daycare has been an issue as well. We're trying to get the word out to people. If you've ever thought about being a licensed, you know, daycare provider in your home, we have a lot of different programs and grant money that we can help people start that business, start their own business, you know, help them walk them through the whole step to apply, to get their license, to make sure their homes are up to code. So we're really using social media right now, trying to get the word out a lot. And I don't know if you hear some of our radio ads or not, but we have quite a few of those going out.
I hear about daycare a big issue. Also hear about transportation. How is, how is transportation getting people to the job site?
As long as they meet the income guidelines, and most people that are unemployed and need to get started, we can get vouchers for them through CAT and get, get them to their jobs until they start making a wage and can afford it on their own. We also have programs, too, for people that are not making quite enough money, or they've just got back into the workforce. Say their car breaks down. They just need some help getting it fixed, need a tire or whatever. We also have grant money that we can assist people with that, too, so they can get back and forth to work. We don't want transportation to stand in the way of someone getting a job. So if there's anything that we can do as far as CAT, the vouchers, you know, some of the programs for getting cars fixed and stuff, we do that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, in your packet is the legislation for tonight. We do have one resolution that the administration has asked that we add. That's Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-nine. You have a copy of that in front of you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda with that addition? I'll assume it's approved by consensus then, and Mr. Hill, I suggest you read these by title and number only this evening, and we will start out with resolutions for third reading. That's Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director of the City of Mount Vernon, Ohio to purchase a pipe-fitter truck for water distribution and collection and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. I move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven.
Second.
They're moving to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods.
Rick, any comments on the new start?
Yes, so this was present in council's budget documents earlier this year. It was estimated to be about a seventy thousand dollar purchase. The vehicle's actually going to be around ninety-five thousand dollars. So in working with Mr. Ball and Director Reinhardt, there was a third vehicle we were looking at this year in terms of a three-quarter ton pickup truck for the camera trailer. We're going to defer that purchase until next year in order to make sure we have the funds for this pipe-fitter vehicle. So I believe this will be the last vehicle purchased out of distribution and collection this year, but it is replacing a nineteen ninety-nine model year. So we're definitely trying to tackle the oldest, oldest equipment first.
What's availability? I like, you hear like a lot of vehicles, there's a long wait time.
I'm actually surprised. They're going through the same vendor they used for the last dump truck they bought, and I'm hearing it's, it'll be delivered this year, which is not always the norm. I know our snowplows are at least a year, year out from an order. Obviously, fire trucks are two years out from an order, so I think we'll see this this year.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. We now move the resolutions for second reading. We have one. That's Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for C A and C Depot parking lot related improvements and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules and take Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine to its third and final reading.
Second.
They're moving to second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
We need to put this out to bid because we want to get into contract for the cement work.
Mr. Hill.
Wait, wait.
Yeah. Was your comment only just on the suspension?
On the suspension, yes.
Yes. Yeah, because those bids fill up really fast, and we would like the paving to be done this year. Thank you.
Okay, we're voting on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes. The roll is suspended. Mrs. Keener.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine.
Second.
They're moving to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Keener.
So I would like to clarify that the work being done here is the paving of the parking lot that includes the straightening of the road, and some of the initial supports for the statue will be done at the same time because those supports need to be done with the concrete. So that is the piece that's included in this. It's just the paving and the support base, just base, for that statue placement. Yes.
Just to verify, we had the discussion. We're, we've approved two hundred thousand dollars, plus then the hundred thousand that comes with the statue.
Yes, which I believe we will have to appropriate once that comes in separately. And thank you for keeping me on track.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Now we move the resolutions for first reading. The first one is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the Elliott Street Sanitary Sewer Project and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. We'll give this as first reading. Can I get a ten-minute committee meeting, please?
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one receives its first reading. We now move to Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director of the City of Mount Vernon to grant an easement to the property located at thirty, three oh one Boynton Street and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severns.
We only need to do a first reading on this, and we can do a committee meeting if council would like so that we can discuss exactly what's happening.
That works. First reading tonight and ten minutes?
Yeah.
Ten-minute meeting. Thank you.
This resolution receives its first reading. We now move to Resolution number twenty, twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to release a request for qualifications for identifying and selecting a qualified firmer firms for closed circuit televised inspection of the City of Mount Vernon's stormwater and sanitary sewer lines within and immediately adjacent to tax increment financing or TIF District Number One, identify and enter into contract with these selected firmer firms for those services and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. We'll give this as first reading. Can I get another ten-minute meeting on that one, too, please?
This resolution receives its first reading. We now move to Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement with IGS Energy and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four to its third and final reading.
Second.
They're moving to second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes. The roll is suspended. Mrs. Woods.
Move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four.
Second.
They're moving to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods.
Yeah, let's talk about this for a little bit. So I, during the break, I asked the mayor a couple of questions. I've had some phone calls and communications. Well, he refused to blame the postal service, so I will. I, for one, have not gotten my letter, so I know there's people that are frustrated that haven't gotten the letter, and then I've gotten people who've gotten the letter that don't understand it. So I think we just, you know, two seconds, kind of, let's go back over what's happening, what we're doing, and why, if you don't mind.
Sure. Two thousand and eight, I believe it was, it was by referendum that the citizenry of Mount Vernon decided that we would like to have the government go broker a deal for energy services, particularly gas and electric. And so in two thousand and eight, it was also given to council, the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio gave council the option, do you want this to be an opt-in or an opt-out? That council chose an opt-out program, and so it's been that way ever since. And anytime we have a contract period, we have a relationship with an energy broker that does all the research for us. It is, well, they do all the research for us and then advise us on what the, what they feel is the best deal. And so we generally listen to what they, what they have to say, and so this is what, this is what it is. This particular, the gas aggregation is with IGS Energy. It was for one-year variable rate, which is zero point zero one five six, I think, cents over the New York Mercantile Exchange, whatever that rate is. It's a commodity that's traded daily or whatever. And so we felt that, we liked the IGS over the other one because of the customer service reviews on IGS, as well as it seemed to be the best rate when you looked at the amount of winters that we were getting. The variable rate will fluctuate, but it will still be, it was projected it would be less than. less than what the fixed rate would be. And so that's what our broker was telling us, and so we decided, okay, well, let's do this. And we ended up getting to a position where we needed to lock in that rate. And so that's what we did. It is, again, something that the voters have said, we want to do this. And so we wanted to get into that contract with IGS.
And, Mayor, this goes into effect with the April billing? Yes.
Yeah, that'll be, it's, the contract period ends...
It begins with, the contract begins in April, and it shows up with the May billing.
Okay.
That's, thank you.
And so if they want to opt out, they can do that during the month of April, up to through the month of April?
The opt-out deadline is April 3. Given the fact that anecdotally, at least, a number of residents have not received the letter from IGS Energy at this point, and this is the 27th of March, it may be worth having a conversation to maybe move that opt-out deadline back a week or 10 days.
Sure.
That is just the opt-out deadline. If somebody finds out six months from now that they want to, that they're in the program, they don't want to be in it, they can leave at any time.
And if there's no fee to leave, is that correct?
I think there is a fee, yes.
There is not?
There is not?
Read that.
Okay, okay, very good.
This is your cancellation?
Well, that's for the opt-out deadline.
Correct, there's no fee to opt out. That's drastic.
Once you pass the deadline for the opt-out, I do believe there is a fee, yes.
Okay. So I know if you got the letter, here's the question I was receiving. Well, there's no rate in this letter, and there kind of is if you know how to go out and look at the NIAEX. But there is a phone number, so you can call and see what this rate is that we're, what you would be opting into. So I would suggest people call that number to find out.
By the way, we did get a confirmation from our energy broker that it's a 262-page report of over 8, 8, 8,646 addresses where the letters were sent.
So if we are authorizing to enter into an agreement now, how has the agreement already taken place? Is this something where we need to do this kind of legislation earlier in the year so that council can look at this before the agreement goes out?
If we, well, I will answer that when, and then I'm going to ask Rob for, this has happened in the past. Not necessarily that that is any kind of an excuse, but by referendum, this is what the customers have asked us to do. So I don't know if it's really going to make a difference. It was just being able to just lock in that rate when we had that very narrow window. Ideally, yeah, I mean, we would like to bring it to council first. Sure, that would be it, but we risk the option in some cases. When we can get quotes from energy providers, they generally last a little, not very long, let's put it that way. The market shifts pretty quickly, so that's, because it was voted on by referendum that this is what we need to do in the past, it's typically been a...
Just do it.
...a housekeeping measure.
And in fact, there have been years when the previous administration did not bring it to council at all.
Is it, so if it's done by referendum and it's been voted on in referendum, it doesn't technically even have to come to council, is that correct?
I would defer to my legal...
I suggest, I suggested as just to keep people informed and involved. It was a good idea to do it, but it was done in 2008, and then there was a gap in years, and I discovered it after I became law director, and I suggested that we start sending it back to council. And then the first one that I remember was actually a three-year contract. But with the volatility of energy prices and inflation over the last several years, they've been reduced to one-year contracts.
For gas, in particular.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
So one more point of needs clarified, those asked to me, if you weren't in this last year, you did not receive this letter, correct? And you would not automatically, you would not automatically, letter or no letter, let's put the mail aside. If you weren't in the aggregation program last year, you wouldn't automatically be in it this year. I think I heard at one of these meetings that...
And you had to opt in.
That you had to opt in. If that's not, if we don't know for sure, that's something we have to find out.
We should look into it. It's also possible that overlapping our aggregation programs, people who call, providers who call door-to-door, people who've heard about coming around, if you've already entered into a multi-year agreement, it is possible that you've locked into a different aggregation.
I'll tell you exactly what happened. I got a call today, says, I don't want any part of your aggregation program, I never have. I want to be assured that I'm not automatically in your aggregation program. That person's watching, I can guarantee you, and I'll ask him live right now to call you tomorrow, not me, because you can get the straight answer from you.
Well, and I can at least give him a number to call to make sure he or she is not in the aggregation program.
Because I know one of these conversations we had, that if you were not in the aggregation program last year, that you would not get the letter this year. Because that's what I thought, I told you, that's where I'd heard that as well. So I guess maybe, if you look into that, Rick, maybe send us an email, because we will get questioned on that.
Yeah, it's complicated. It could be possible that if you're not in a current aggregation program, you're automatically default. I've got to get into the details, because there's probably three or four different scenarios that could result in...
Because that's a biggie. There's a lot of people, there's a lot of people, including my wife, when she saw variables, looking at, you know, is this what we want to do? So there's going to be a lot of phone calls about that, the people do their own aggregation program.
Yeah, if they call the office, I'll find a number, find out if they're in or out.
Or maybe send us the email, what you found out as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And in my hearing, we're going to look to see if we can extend this deadline past the third for people?
I'm going to talk to our energy broker tomorrow. I think that is easily doable.
Okay.
I don't think we need to send another letter out, insist that someone calls, you know, after April 3. You know, if we extend the deadline to a week or 10 days, given the fact that the mailing had not been consistent, that I think would be helpful.
And not that this has to do with this legislation, but this has nothing to do with our electricity, because I had somebody call about that. That's through 2025.
2025. We're locked into a really good rate there.
Anybody else?
Just, I wonder if we have a letter, could we scan that to the city website for people who haven't received it yet? Or is it name-specific? But maybe put the information out there if we could, you know, scan a PDF or something out there for city to, people to get on and look at, maybe.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2023-Dash-35. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2023-Dash-35. Authorizing the Safety Service Director to dispose of a vehicle in the police department not needed for public use by the City of Mount Vernon and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution Number 2023-Dash-35 to its third and final reading.
Second.
They moved a second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2023-Dash-35.
Second.
They moved a second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Rick, would you like to talk about this vehicle?
Yeah, this is an impounded vehicle through the police department. They'd like to start moving forward with selling it and hopefully generating some profit off of it, so. I did want to fill council on something I shared with Mr. Hillier after our last meeting. I did speak with Lieutenant Tharp in the police department. He does try to prioritize getting at least high-value vehicles up on gov deals as quickly as possible. When we do do disposal legislation, it does sometimes take a couple of weeks for him as he fits in his other duties. He is also the administrator of the evidence room, so that consumes some of his time. So he does try and get them up as quickly as possible. And the one thing I wanted to let council know is Public Works Director Henkel will typically package his new vehicle requests with a disposal request just to keep things straight in his head, so when the new vehicle comes, he knows he's authorized to sell the old vehicle. So I know there was a question last meeting about how quickly or, you know, when these things get up. You know, longest timeframe I asked Lieutenant Tharp was about a month. We'll get things up on gov deals to sell.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2023-Dash-36. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2023-Dash-36. A resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution Number 2023-Dash-36 to its third and final reading.
Second.
They moved a second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2023-Dash-36.
Second.
They moved a second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, we got $31,000 here.
Thank you, Mrs. Seville and council members. You heard from your fire chief at an earlier meeting this evening talking about the energy co-op cooperative roundup for workout equipment. We did receive the $4,000 and ready for that to be put in place so that they can get the equipment that they're looking for. We do appreciate what the energy co-op has done for our community here as well. And item two, permissive auto tax, we have, by now, we have exceeded our actually estimated revenues for the permissive auto tax, and so the county has sent back refunds back to us in the amount of $24,189.44, and we'd like to also be able to put those resources back into our road improvement program. And your third item is for medical director in the amount of $3,000. This is a portion coming out of the college township fund 226. The department chief wanted to have an allocation between our downtown Mount Vernon station as well as what we have in regards to college township and make an allocation of that. So, and they have the resources to do this, so. Thank you, Mrs. Seville, council.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, any questions?
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2023-Dash-37. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2023-Dash-37. A resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to transfer certain funds.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take, it's take Resolution Number 2023-Dash-37 to its third and final reading.
Second.
They moved a second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2023-Dash-37.
Second.
They moved a second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Well, Mr. Scott, we got $347,875.
Yeah, we do. This, council, this is in regards items one through five in regards to the pool operation, the new management company. We're aligning these dollars into a single line account to help be a part of and pay for the maintenance services that those people will be providing. Keep in mind also that there will be some additional supplementals coming in regards to this. Ariel Foundation has pledged $50,000 towards this as well. As soon as that award comes back, we'll have council appropriate that for this as well. And then overall, in our federal ARPA funds, we did some, looking at some allocating funds in regards to daycare and the daycare programs. We felt this was a fit for that, and so that's, we'll pick up the difference around about $45,000, maybe $46,000 to cover out the rest of the contract for this calendar year. Appreciate what the Ariel Foundation has done for this community and for our city, and they continue to help support recreational activities amongst others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?[1500.74] Any other questions? Mr. Hillier?
Yes. So, Terry, is this the one-time transfer? Will we be transferring more money later on?
No, this will be it.
This is it? So, that and the $50,000 from Ariel Foundation?
And our ARPA dollars.
Will that'll pay for the pool for the year?
Yeah.
And we met with the pool management company earlier today. They had to bid based on our current staffing plan. They believe that they can work with our pool over the summer to increase efficiencies and hopefully have a lower contract cost next year. But they weren't able to bid any lower than what our staffing plan through the Department of Health will allow. So, at least through this summer, we'll have to maintain that, but they, based on their experience, they believe we can, we can create some efficiencies that could lower that cost down the road.
So, with these numbers, would that include in the pay raises they talked about and all that?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So, unless something breaks down unforeseen?
And we still have some. Now, we did not reallocate all of our original resources. We still have some, we have some residual left back because there's a couple of things that they're not going to be doing for us, which we can do ourselves with our own staff, and that is the opening and closing. Those are the two parts that we have left resources behind for which we can actually take care of and do ourselves.
And I was asked that question. When you say open and closing, you mean spring and fall, not every day?
Yeah, yes.
That's correct. Yes, yes, we're talking about the opening of the spring. Yes, okay, yes.
And we also left $35,000 in the maintenance account. If there is a major failure, we will still have to address that, and that's, some of those funds have been left for that.
Sure.
Can you tell us about lines six and seven as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. So, on line six, we got so involved. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mrs. Keener. On item six, vehicle equipment maintenance, maintenance in the street department, we have, all we're doing is a reallocation, creating a line account that's called Tools slash Equipment for Mr. Henkel, the $27,100. The fund has, has available resources to make those transfers in there. And then on the item seven, we're back to permissive license tax. We were in permissive auto earlier in previous legislation. Permissive license tax, again, this is where we do road improvements and so forth, and he'd like to mirror the same allocations of Tools slash Equipment, which will help efficiently help them operate their departments. Again, these are highway funds coming into the city in funds 201 and 211.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. We now move to Resolution Number 2023-38. Mr. Hill?
Resolution Number 2023-38, a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program for road salt for 2023 and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Siebel?
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution Number 2023-38 to its third and final reading.
Second.
They've moved to second for suspension of the rules and any discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes. The rule is suspended. Mrs. Siebel?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2023-38.
Second.
They've moved to second for the adoption of this resolution and any discussion. Mrs. Siebel?
This is something we have to do every year. So, Rick, are you going to talk about it?
I always can. Yeah, so every year, we work with ODOT on the cooperative purchasing agreement. We are expected to provide them with our estimate of how much road salt we're going to use in the following year, which is super easy to do, as we all know. What I will say is I expect a pretty low salt purchase this year. Mr. Henkel's informed me that we still haven't taken even 90% of our delivery for this year. Obviously, it's been a mild winter, so, you know, it's always a guessing game, and it seems like in my three years here, it's been buy a lot one year, buy a lot a little next year, buy a lot one year, so I think we're on a low purchase year right now. But this just authorizes Mr. Henkel to submit to ODOT how much salt he thinks he's going to buy next year.
You telling us we're going to need a lot of salt next year?
Well, we're going to buy a little and then we'll need a lot. This is where Tom gets out his crystal ball and he rubs it and tells him how much he has.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Now, we're going to the resolutions that were just added this evening. That's Resolution Number 2023-39. Mr. Hill?
Resolution Number 2023-39, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to execute the agreed director's final findings and orders regarding drinking water treatment material with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods?
Thank you, sir. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2023-39 to its third and final reading.
Second.
They've moved to second for suspension of the rules and any discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
It's moved to second to suspend the rules. Mrs. Woods?
Move to adopt Resolution 2023-39.
Second.
They've moved to second for adoption of this resolution and any discussion. Mrs. Woods?
Mr. Boring, we need to say anything regarding this?
We've come to an agreement with the Ohio EPA, and I ask counsel to bless our entry into it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Before I offer my yes voting, Mr. Boring might want to talk to Knox Page's afterwards because she's dying to know what's going on with that. Yes. That was yes. Thank you.
Resolution is adopted. That concludes the resolutions for this evening. We now move on to ordinances. First ordinance is ordinance Number 2023-10. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance Number 2023-10, an ordinance to approve, adopt, and enact the February 2023 replacement pages to the codified ordinances to repeal ordinances in conflict therewith to publish the enactment of new matter and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier, I'll give this its first reading. This resolution receives its first reading. Now, I move to ordinance Number 2023-11. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance Number 2023-11, an ordinance fixing the number of hourly employees in the City of Mount Vernon Fire Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayhem?
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings, take resolution, excuse me, ordinance Number 2023-11 to its third and final reading.
Second.
They've moved to second for suspension of the rules and any discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Mayhem?
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 2023-11.
Second.
They've moved to second for the adoption of this ordinance and any discussion. Mr. Mayhem?
Counsel, we heard at the end of the committee meeting that these positions are being added as part of a grant, the three-year grant. They'll be paid for 100%. We hope to be able to continue after three years with, we can reapply for the grant or look at college township revenue, as you heard explained by the chief. Any questions?
Comment? I just like, on record, I appreciate the work that our fire chief and his employees have done for the grants that we've, this one especially, but many, many grants that they've done over the years. The amount of money they've saved the City of Mount Vernon is unreal. Thank you.
This is the Safer Grant, correct?
Correct.
So, they've been waiting for this one for, what, eight, 12 months now?
They got awarded. They had to go through a six-month recruitment period. The grant is nearly, or maybe even more than a million dollars for the next three years, so.
Yeah. I'm...
Yes.
Good, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severns.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. The next ordinance is ordinance Number 2023-12. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance Number 2023-12, an ordinance fixing the number of hourly employees in the City of Mount Vernon Police Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayhem?
Mr. President, we're going to give this its first reading. We're going to have a committee meeting in two weeks to ask questions regarding this, and the police chief has requested if you have specific questions, it can be emailed to him ahead of time. That would be helpful so he can have quick and efficient answers for us.
This ordinance receives its first reading. The final ordinance for this evening is ordinance Number 2023-13. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance Number 2023-13, an ordinance establishing the position of engineering department intern and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis?
And, Mr. President, we'll give this a first reading and ask for a five-minute committee meeting. We'll see how quickly Mr. Ball can give us an update on the intern. Thank you.
This ordinance also receives its first reading. That concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. We now move to remarks to the administration. Mayor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. President and counsel. Just a few things. I did send you an update last Friday. I'm not going to go through those things again, but I do want to give you some other information on Saturday. The mayor's youth leadership council did the cleanup at Memorial Park. We got a full dump truck load, full of sticks, that our parks department staff does not have to go and pick up. And I was out there helping. I can tell you, I was sore for two days, so. Anyway, that fulfills their, their second and final community service project that they have set forth in their bylaws. We will be hearing from them probably in May as a presentation of what they learned throughout this whole process. We also want to give a really great shout-out to the friends of the Coozies Scenic River. Curtis Casto was a person that kind of, was the administrator of that group, who spearheaded an effort to clean up the, the trash and everything along Arch Avenue Park in the vicinity. That was very well done, and so we, we do want to thank the efforts of all of these volunteers. We've heard a lot of, of thanking for the cleanup at the river along High Street. While we got the ball rolling, the, the final touches of all of the removing of the vegetation and so forth, invasive vegetation, was done by ODOT. I have shared that with Danielle from ODOT's District Five, and she has passed that along as well, so we are very, very happy about that. This Friday, Morpsy has its state of the region meetings. Mr. Severns, Mr. Zick, Ms. Keener, and I will be there in attendance to see how we are doing. There will be some issues regionally that we will, I'm sure, bring back and will want to share with counsel. And this past week, the OML, I left you a couple of sheets of what we had from the Ohio Municipal League Lobby Day, which was Wednesday, and I got to speak with Representative Kicke, Representative Beth Leary, even though she's not Mount Vernon, but she certainly is North County, and obviously Senator Andy Brenner on those issues that have concerned us. And lastly, Mr. President, I would like to welcome back Janice. Janice, you officially now hold a special place in my heart.
All right. I can't top that. We're going to, Mr. Zick?
Yep. Really quick, I know, I appreciate counsel's effort to reappropriate funding toward the pool management contract. Shortly after our last council meeting, we did sign a contract with Columbus Pool Management. I believe this would be the first time that the city has contracted with an outside vendor to help us with our pool management services. I know I'm excited. They're really deep into recruitment. I'm sure you'll see signs around the pool already asking for staff. They're really invested in growing staff into future supervisory positions. They reported today that they've really already filled probably a lot of their front desk and concession staff. Obviously, what's the most staff we need, lifeguards? So, if anybody is interested in serving as a lifeguard, please look at the press release on the city's Facebook page or website. There's a link you can go to and file your application there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Mr. Stoller?
Just want to say, welcome, Janice, and you look pretty good for 60%.
Yeah.
Mr. Boring?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Severns?
I just want to say kudos as well to ODOT for cleaning up around the hardcore corner curb there. If you've not driven out there, I mean, it looks really nice. I noticed that Sunday morning going to church. My wife and I looked over there and was like, wow, it's really clean. Looks nice. So, thank you for getting that project going, and other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Hillier?
Thanks, Mr. President. I appreciate the work that the administration did on the pool contract. I have a question. So, if we have a, you know, we have the weather, so we can figure out every day anyways, a cold, wet summer, do we get discounted for those days we're not open, or is it a flat rate?
So, if it is weather-related, there is a provision in the contract where they're not held liable for that. If they're unable to staff our pool for a certain amount of time, then they do owe us money back on the contract. So, you know, in some ways, we give on the weather side, but if they can't staff, let's say, the slides one day or even the whole pool, and they have to close, then they, they owe us money back on the contract. Yeah.
Just, and then one other item I saw where the, on the agenda where they met again to condemn another building, to move along the owner of the building, to either get it done or tear it down. I appreciate the work. I think there's still more out there we can work on, but anything we can do to clean up some of these properties is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Two.
Yeah, the last time we met, it was on two. So, we've done three here in this year.
Mr. Francis?
Hey, Mr. President, just a couple of things. First, Janice, it was great seeing you come up the stairs with John, and you was actually pulling him. It was good to see that. And second, I'd like just for all of us to remember Nashville, Tennessee, and a shooting, and just, just a time where the community should just remember to lift up the community, communities of this country. And second, Mississippi. Every time I see the pictures of that tornado, what, what it, what it did, I try to picture where we would be if nightfall came and something like that happened, and we come out and everything's gone. So, you know, I feel blessed that we live in a community where we're vibrant and we have each other, but to always lift up those communities where those things are happening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Mayhem?
I'd like to thank the police chief and the fire chief for being here tonight and appreciate the work of our emergency services. Mr. Sheller said the grant money that's coming in and just working to keep our community safe. And I think we've all seen, never seen the chief enter speechless before, so we have all witnessed, witnessed history. But he'll be, he'll be back and ready to go in two weeks to answer your questions, so. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Mrs. Woods?
Thank you. I don't think we'll be together again prior to Easter, so to, to kind of piggyback on what you said in light of what happened in Nashville today, just hug your family and thank the good Lord for them. And after our big high winds the other day, honest to goodness, it sounded like bullets hitting the side of our house, all the pine trees, but I figured I'd get up the next day and the roads would be covered. Whoever cleaned up our streets did an amazing job. Please let them know that.
There were some of the volunteers that helped out with that as well.
That was awesome job. Yeah, well done, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Keener?
I'd like to thank Connie who came in Brandy's Place from Ohio Means Jobs. I went out and met with them a couple of weeks ago and had some idea what they did out there and thought that this would be great exposure for that organization just to get their information out to more people, because I know that Cheryl will always be here to cover the news. I'd also like to thank the Streets Department. I don't know if anybody saw on Saturday the limb that came down and took out the light that was on Gambier. You would have had to be very quick to see that because they were out there in less than an hour cleaning that up, and then SOS came through on Sunday and did a lot of other work. So, thank you for all of those that were out there working and made it so that our streets were passable. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mrs. Siebel, welcome back.
Thank you. Well, I have a lot of people to thank. To start with, I blacked out downtown, so I'd have a lot of people around. I didn't want to do it where nobody would notice it, and how they always say the police is never around when you need them, not so. When I opened my eyes, there were policemen there. They had been at a stoplight, and they saw me go down. And I don't know how I got carried to the bank, but I was on the steps, and then there was the EMS. The fire department was there, and I was saying, I wasn't even there, and everybody was already there. So, I couldn't ask for better service than what I got, and they both were there. So, I really thanked the police department and the fire department. They were there, and they gave me superb care. And I was back, and I, they kept talking about blood, and I'm like, what are they talking about blood for? And so then, when I was in there and they were cleaning up the blood and stuff, and I said to the AMT, I said, or the paramedic, you know, there was a lot of blood somewhere, and he said, yeah, you've cut your head, and I said, oh. And I said, is there blood on the sidewalk? And he said, yes, and I said, oh, no, we got to get that off. Right then, I started thinking of the city, you know. He says, don't worry, we already cleaned it up. And I said, oh, good, thank you. So, I worried about that. So, they even cleaned that up, so I was thankful. So, I wanted to thank them. But then I went to KCH, and I got superb care there, so I want to thank KCH. And the cardiology, they did a superb job there, too. I had great care. And that's where we have a joint feeling right there with our heart, and we went through. And then I have, I am so blessed to live here. I have got so many people that prayed for me, and that prayers were answered, and it was so wonderful from all the friends and the cards and the flowers. And people made food for my husband. I couldn't believe that. He'd come in the hospital, and he said, someone took, came and dropped off food for me, and I'm going, wow, they're spoiling you. And they said, well, we got to keep him strong. He's going to have to take care of you. And I said, well, that is wonderful. So, and I want to thank everybody on council. They took care of everything, and the business went on. They didn't even need me, and it was wonderful how everything, you know, went on, and thanks for all the calls and for the consideration everybody had here. And I feel so lucky, especially after what happened today, just like what you talked about. And I just, makes you sick to think, you know, how could someone go in and kill three kids and three adults? So, thank you. We'll just keep praying and try to help those families. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Janice. Pleasure back. That concludes the, the discussion this evening. We'd like to thank the media for being here this evening. And that being said, a call for adjournment.
So, move?
Second.
They've moved to second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both nay. We are adjourned.